America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read the public notice first, then.
Please.
I'm not sure which I do first, but I'll just do this. The town board of the town of Shandaken calls for a public hearing to review the 2023 preliminary budget to be held on Wednesday, November 9th, 2022 at 6:30 PM preceding our regular monthly meeting, and at such time hearing any person in favor or against the preliminary budget at 7209 State Route 28, Shandaken, New York. Board member Drake?
Here.
Board member Nysel?
Here.
Board member Steen?
Here.
Board member Van Blarke?
Here.
Supervisor De Scalfani?
Here. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. I worked hard on this budget. I know we had a couple of changes we made a few weeks ago, and I changed things up myself just to reduce the budget, reduce the burden on the taxes. And I got that approved from our accountant, from our attorney, and if you guys approve it, then we're okay. Ultimately, you don't have to approve it now, but when we do a resolution, then, at the next stage of the meeting.
We do that in the next meeting. Right now, we just do public comment, right?
Right, just public comments.
Do you want to run down the changes so people know?
The changes we did, we lowered the elected salaries to $500, and I also lowered the appointed salaries to $500. That includes the judges, the chiefs, and each of us electeds. I'll take comments at any time.
On the budget?
On the budget. Please, please rise and come to the microphone.
I went back about 10 years in the budget with the supervisor gets paid, the highway superintendent, the town clerk. So in 10 years, the supervisor's salary has increased 41%. The town clerk's 33%, and the highway superintendent 20%. Now, at the preliminary hearing, I had a halfway decent salary increase. Now, you just reduced it. I thought the preliminary budget was about that. How do you just change it? So in 10 years, 20% as opposed to 40, 41%, and 33%. And how's that fair? So that's up to the board. I don't think it's fair.
Can I say something? About mine or no? Just for those employees. You know, I felt though that, for mine anyway, after what the other people do, but I felt that I didn't need to have a raise. 3,000, I'd be up to 500, only because I know the staff were underpaid, barely paid over minimum wage.
Yeah.
Now, let me finish. So you drive by McDonald's, they're making more there than our girls are.
Yeah.
You know, some haven't been there many years, and I'd rather, I know we are all underpaid. We know that. We see what the other towns get paid. We know that. We'll never catch up. But the thing is, let's get the regular staff, the people that don't have, I just don't want to get into, but, you know, let them make at least a living wage.
But that was all decided-
Because if they're going, we won't be able to hire anybody.
That was all decided before you guys took your wage back here, the other way. You know, again, you have a board, a supervisor for four board members, you have a town clerk with two paid town clerk assistants, and then you have an assessor with two paid assessors. I work by myself. I don't have anybody to pay to help me.
Well, your care. Your care is not making much.
We all have secretaries.
Well, secretaries aren't making enough money. That's all, that's what I, in my opinion, from my pay.
So you're maximizing what you want.
If I'm fine.
That's your prerogative.
Okay, so that's what I do.
I should have no reflection on me. And again, I'm looking at 10 years, what's happened over 10 years. So my position keeps getting tagged every year, and it's not just this administration. It was before, it's going to happen for 10 years. It's getting old. And compared to the towns around us, I'm 30 grand a year less than the towns around us.
I'm 20.
Yeah, so that's a deal.
He's 20.
Yeah?
I'm not.
I'm 30.
And we do, and we do a lot.
If you don't mind if I comment, for one, I do believe you deserve to make more, for one. I'm not disputing that at all. We did agree on the preliminary budget, and I know there was expenses that, that I did not know about that came up, that I believe needed to be, needed to, we needed to find money to cover those expenses, and please jump in anybody whenever they'd like. And we had to, I believe, this is what I believe, find the money for that. And unfortunately, I think your raise took a hit for that. Not that that should be the right thing, I'm not saying that, but if it comes down to, you know, the secretarial squad getting a raise or elected officials getting a raise, I just feel that if we are making that step, then it's a step in the right directions for them. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying you don't deserve it. That's not what I'm saying. I believe you do. But I believe that's what happened.
But this has been happening for 10 years.
But the girls never got raises either, though.
I mean, it's not like-
So now we're stepping that way, at least to get their pay up first, and we can get a raise next year.
Okay.
I'm just saying my opinion.
My last question is, we got a spin interest, or help me with any issue.
So Kyle, can you-
Please.
Can you clarify?
Clarify which part?
You said something came up that you-
Was it retirement, I believe? That was an extra big chunk of money that we had to, that we, that wasn't discussed in the preliminary budget hearing?
That was a big chunk, yeah.
Okay, and I believe that's, that's what I'm talking about, and that's why I believe, if, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that we had to look for money other, other places.
But it was mainly, we're trying to keep the budget as reasonable as possible, and I, I kept the general down below 2%.
But we have an extra hundred, the town has an extra $170,000 from short-term rental licenses. That's something we did not have this year that we have now. So where's all that money gone?
It went to all the raises. Well, there was not just raises, but we had a lot of expenses to put those out.
I'm asking.
Oh, of course. We have a larger building department. We have a full-time builder, building department, Donna. We have a part-time building inspector, Peter McGurk, and we also have a zoning officer, dedicated zoning officer, Grace.
A lot of-
A lot of, a lot of work goes into that $170,000 STR income. A lot of expenditures come out of that. That's a, that's a revenue, not straight out, boom. It's like thinking that, oh, the $150,000 or $160,000 that comes in from the ambulance just comes in and nothing comes out of that. There is a lot that's paid for, actually, more than what comes in goes out to the ambulance.
Okay, that's the ambulance. I'm not talking about the ambulance. So you're saying for $170,000, we have another, what, code enforcement officer? We have more people working in the building department?
Yeah.
That's awful, that's awful big.
Well, look at the building department, and also, and also, our, our energy cost has gone through the roof. I think yours probably did too at home. So what used to be a $70,000 a year energy cost is now $140,000. Town electric went way up.
Not according to the monthly, the monthly expenditure that I sit here every month and look at, and you tally up.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, go back every single month and look at the, the charges that are on the resolutions every month and come up with that. I'm trying to figure out, we had the money before the money came in from short-term rental licenses.
The money for what before?
We had the money to cover the, the expenses for the town.
They are here, covered.
And an extra $170,000.
It's not extra. If you look at the budget, expenditures equal the revenues. There's no extra $170,000. There is another $170,000, but it's not extra. It is being expended.
I think it might be worth, one of the things if you look on the revenue side of things, there's an estimate for the mortgage, the mortgage of-
Mortgage tax.
Mortgage tax.
Went up to.
And the estimate on that is, I believe, quite a bit lower because there's quite a bit fewer houses that we expect are likely to be sold next year than this year. And so there is an offsetting decreased revenue that is at least part of the difference.
Please come up to the microphone and speak if you would like to speak.
For my own procedural clarification, hypothetically, if we were as a board to consider any changes to that budget, would that be done in this meeting, or would that be done in the next?
We'd have to amend the, we'd have to amend the budget for the resolution.
As a rep.
Yes, we would have to make a motion to amend the budget.
In the next?
In the next meeting.
Next meeting, the next one tonight?
The main.
Next meeting next month?
No.
Just joking, that's what I thought.
20 minutes from now.
20 minutes from now, the next meeting.
Just, so, I mean, my understanding is that this was solely for public comment, so.
This is solely for public comment.
If there's no additional public comment.
Can we adjourn the public hearing?
Yeah, are there any additional public comments? Yes, Jan?
Not for this year, but for next year, perhaps.
Say your name, please.
Oh, I'm Jan.
Amber.
Jan Jaffe Pinehill. Hi, everybody.
Where are the TV lamps?
For, for next year's budget, maybe it would be possible to consider having the plans that are tied to the budget discussed so that when people see what things cost, they also see what the plan is for the year, because I think that would help everybody sort of understand what things cost and why. That's one comment I wanted to make. And the other one is that I think everybody is paid incredibly low salaries for these jobs, and I would be interested in a conversation about how to get out of this terrible dilemma because every year it just comes up, I mean, what you said, Eric, is true. I think everybody is like hurty. It's, it's, these jobs are not part-time jobs. Even, even the full-time jobs aren't full-time, they, they're more than that. So how does a town this size solve that problem? We're not going to do it today, but I think it'd be really interesting to talk about, how do you do that? How do you tackle that? So those are my comments.
Great. Well, just as a background, I think any supervisor who is the budget officer and chief financial officer, we have to always be in touch with the state comptroller's office, and it's imperative that we keep the budget in budget. We can't overspend. We have to try and keep our budget within the cap, and if we go over the cap, like, is possible. We're around that 2%, so there may be some monies, more monies that come in from assessors, then it will go down from taxes, just that the assessments of some properties have gone up. So none of that is like set in stone right now, but basically, the comptroller's office wants us to come to a reasonable budget, and we do that by looking at past budgets, years prior, and how things were spent, and we have to do things giving people a good raise. It's generally that we've given people a 3% or 4% raise. Sometimes we have to make it a little more slack than that, but our secretarial staff has been making very much under what they should be. So we did do a big increase, and that's where a lot of the STR revenues went, as it went to energy costs. But these are things that we have to try and project, what will next year be like, so we're not caught short.
And I think to answer your question about how to right the ship as a whole, pick and choose, right? This was the first step in getting the house in order, taking care of the support staff, making sure that they can have a livable wage, and then move forward next year. You know, on top of energy costs, we have a vehicle expenditure in budget, we have quite, quite a few lines that are going up 30% or 15%.
Insurance.
Insurance, always.
Yep.
So I, I think it's on our minds, and that was the budget hearing we had 20 days ago, that was certainly what we were talking about, is how to do this, but how to do it in a smart way. And, you know, in an ideal world, we could just fix everything in one year, but not at the cost of the taxpayer.
Right.
I, I really appreciate that. I just, you know, as a newcomer to budget, this budget, but not to many budgets, this is a small budget for a town this size.
Yeah.
And I just was commenting on that. And then on the planning side, I just think it'd be really helpful to connect the plans for 20, let's say, 2024 with the budget for 2024.
Yep.
And so I think it would really help people say, okay, I see where this money is going, and that's, these are things we really need.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Just want to make one point as well about, you know, funding salaries with the short-term rental income. That's a one-year hit. We're not going to get an added, a new, an extra, there's not going to be $170,000 from short-term rentals next year. That was a, there will be annual.
Oh, no, next year, there'll be 170.
Fees, but-
But it could go down every year.
It's not going to go up.
But we're not going to get the application fees, we're going to get licensing fees, and we, we-
In theory, it would drop.
Yeah.
A little bit.
It's not going to all disappear, but we are going to see less of it next year. So if we were banking salaries on STR income, when what a lot of people in this town want are less STRs, you can see where the problem.
Fewer.
Fewer, sorry, yes, fewer.
We need a pop store.
Yeah.
Farmers market should work on that. Pop store.
We almost had one.
Okay, I'm making a motion to adjourn if we have no more comments. Take 10 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, seven minutes.
Hi, Chad. Nice to see you again. Sorry.
Can you fit?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
See how that works? Thank you, see? She wouldn't, she wouldn't do that for me. She wants me to suffer.
Then the job disappears.
Oh, good. You don't want to.
That's my part.
Yeah, you don't want to. Forget it.
Pick them up.
Good, you must not have anyone on the phone.
Oh, yay.
A little bit.
No, for the, I haven't looked, I haven't.
Don't look.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, just.
Board member Drake?
Here.
Board member Nysel?
Still here.
Board member Steen?
Here.
Board member Van Blarke?
Present.
Supervisor De Scalfani?
Here.
Get it up.
Is a camera?
I think we're having-
Approval?
Technical conversations there.
Technical issues.
He'll be on the board in ways. You know that, so. You might as well proceed, he'll just be on you.
Okay, we lost it.
The live feed is off.
The live feed is down.
Yeah.
Maybe it just needs to be reset.
Yeah, we saw it, maybe.
Okay.
If we get it, we get it.
We'll, we'll continue. Do I get a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As you know, our budget hearing was tonight, and there is an overall 2.14% increase, a 1.9% increase for the general, and most of it's from energy costs. Also, we like to talk about this long enough, so we're announcing a creation of a committee to update our comprehensive plan. Please call or email Joyce or myself with your interest. I'll pass your names around to the board, and we'll come up with some kind of a committee. After seeing a New York grant called New York Forward, offering Main Street revitalization, and this is for infrastructure and revitalization, I called a few residents, and we put our heads together and thinking about something available for the next state offering, which probably might be March or next August. A lot of folks are out there with some interest and experience in grant writing, and if you're interested in that, please call me or Joyce with your info or resume. It's a very competitive grant, and unfortunately for us, we have two Main Streets and two downtowns that will be competing with each other. The Pine Hill flood analysis program is still working. We're going to have a final meeting with the engineers. They'll, we'll have that meeting at the Pine Hill Community Center on November 30th at 7 o'clock. Everybody's invited. Coming up, we will join and offer our employees the New York State Deferred Compensation Plan. This will cost us no money and have little time to set up for our employees' future. I have recommended Kevin to the newly formed Ulster County Law Enforcement Community Engagement Committee. This is just some updates. The supervisors report for October 2022. Time Warner franchise fees, $18,213.35. STR fees, $26,937.62. Building reimbursements, $3,339.98. Social Security tax reimbursements, F-941, $31.63. Ambulance fees, $28,823.52. Town clerk fees, EZ Pass, $75. Rental of real property, $1,978.57. Justice fees, $6,089. Building permit fees, $6,823. Dog licenses, $19. Register fees, $35. Planning fees, $100. Miscellaneous revenue, $1,106.80. Records management, $2,836.50. That was for a grant Joyce and Robert got. New York health workers bonus, $13,500. That was for health bonuses for our EMTs and paramedics. Phoenisha water rents, $12,000. Pine Hill water rents, $18,000, for a total of $139,908.97. Joyce, communications?
Sure. So Ellie's going to talk about this more later, but the Phoenisha Turkey Trot's coming up. I won't spoil it for you, you can tell them when. But I just want to let you know that Chama did get the donation button, so many people don't attend the Turkey Trot or want to walk or run or wobble. But if you would like to, you can donate in their website, write this down, phoenishaturkeytrot.org. Easy, right? So, it's really nice. And this year, we won't even tell them where it's going. Let her tell them.
But what day is the Turkey Trot on?
I'm not saying. So, the Phoenisha Playhouse tomorrow night, well, Ellie's better speaker, so let her do it. The Phoenisha Playhouse is having tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Phoenisha Playhouse, the 40th Asbury Short Film Concert, and that's Thursday, November 10th at 7:30 PM, and tickets are available online, on their Facebook page, or calling 688-2279. The Winter Farmers Market, the Phoenisha Farmers Market has moved west, and they're up in Pine Hill. They're going to be open this, not this Saturday, Sunday. It's going to be the next one, and then December 4th. So it's going to be November 20th, December 4th, December 18th, and then weekly starting January 8th. So and they're going to be at the Pine Hill Community Center, which is on Main Street. And lastly, there's one more. Friday, the town offices will be closed because of Veterans Day, and there's a ceremony at 11:00 AM at the American Legion Hall and Veterans Way. Ellie?
As Joyce promised, more information on the Phoenisha Turkey Trot, Saturday, November 26th, 10:00 AM. It starts and ends in Parish Field. It is roughly a two-and-a-half mile or 4K run, as she said, phoenishaturkeytrot.org. Not only do we need more runners, volunteers, and sponsors are needed as well.
And they can walk.
You can just walk it. I believe the first 100 people to sign up get a Phoenisha Turkey Trot t-shirt, and there's raffles and prizes and all sorts of fun. And there's a free, I forget how long it is, but there's a free toddler trot, I think it's called, for the little ones who aren't quite going to make all 4K.
And the donations are going.
Oh, right, the donations, thank you, Joyce. The donations are going to benefit the Shandaken Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
What was it named?
Speaking of-
November 26th.
26th, sorry. Speaking of Parks and Rec.
After Thanksgiving.
Still speaking of-
Ah, sorry.
Congratulations, Kevin, on your win last night.
Oh, yes.
It was a close one.
Woo, woo, woo.
What did you win?
I was on the ballot.
Oh, that wins.
For a town board.
I meant the Parks and Rec guy.
So excited, he gets one more year.
It was a sport thing.
No, not yet.
He's our Parks and Rec guy, too. He's our liaison.
All right, committee reports, ambulance. Kyle?
I do not have an ambulance report.
No ambulance report, no, nothing from Rich. Grace built- Grace, building zoning, zoning building?
Zoning, I do. I signed up on eight permits this month for Donna to look at the issued building permits. You have to ask her if they got issued. Planning board had to move their meeting, it's next Monday. They have a public hearing at 6:45, and their regular monthly meetings at 7:00. DGA's meeting is next Wednesday at 7:00. These are all the things I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I may have something from Donna, anyway. Chad?
I'm actually gonna stand up at the mic tonight.
Whoa!
And I'm gonna be the long-winded one, such Richard. All right, so, report-wise, 154 calls for service with 3073 property checks, with 227 calls for service for the month, and 22 summons and four arrests. More importantly, we don't always get to recognize our employees, and this was an extraordinary incident that Officer Troy O'Connor needs to be recognized for, and this is the perfect opportunity.
Perfect.
So this is an exceptional duty award, and I am extremely pleased to award you, Troy, Officer Troy O'Connor, with the exceptional duty award for intelligently performing an exceptional act of bravery involving imminent personal hazard to your own life. You're being recognized for your actions on September 22nd, 2022, when without regard for your own life, you entered a burning, smoke-filled building. During your initial search of the apartment, you located two sleeping individuals, woke them, and evacuated them to safety. Without your quick and decisive actions, this could have been a more tragic event. Your efforts and determination set a good example for other officers and demonstrates your commitment to your job and your responsibilities as a member of the Shandaken Police Department. Congratulations, Officer Troy O'Connor. Your professionalism and dedication have earned you this exceptional duty award.
Wow!
I told him everything else.
I learned well.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Phoenisha Water, Rick, do you wanna say anything?
I, I just wanna say that we're getting into the cold weather, and everybody's gonna have to buck up their outfits, especially trailers. And I do have a situation where there's a building in town that there's no heat, no electric, that there's someone staying here, but I'm cold raining up to shut the water off because, you know, I have to do this, I don't like to do it, but, um, I don't know, what's going on? I don't wanna, see, it fills up last year.
Talk to me about it later. We'll have to bring the county and get the county involved.
All right.
Okay. Social services and, yeah. Okay, Rick. Anything else to report on?
Well, just having problems getting product, uh, hydrant parts. We're in a third-world country now, it's like Cuba. You know, you can't get anything. Seven, eight months now, and they still, I used to get it the next day, and it's just terrible.
Yeah.
Terrible. That's it.
Thanks. Anybody, Pine Hill Water?
I don't have a report for Pine Hill Water.
Museum?
Museum, I do. Okay. Shandaken Historical Museum report for October 2022. We've had 46 visitors this month, plus all the people coming and going on Pine Hill Day. Not everyone signs our guest register. Sometimes, only one will sign for a group. It does slow down this time of year. Then there's the weekend, I was closed with the flu, I still don't feel 100%. We've had a donation of old portraits from the Clark family, who owned the Howland-Lamson house in Mount Tremper. They were discovered in the attic. We're trying to identify some of them. Pine Hill Day was a small success. We found out there was a saboteur in Pine Hill pulling down signs, moving roadblocks, causing the day to be less than it could have been. Visitors were, for a while, blocked from entering. My friend Chris Van Cleek, the historian from the Winnisook Club, has gifted us with a piece of the club's history entitled "A Winnisook Winter," the telling of the Hovenberg family surviving the winter on Slide Mountain at the club in 1933 to 1934. I'll be posting it on Facebook soon. I spoke with Vinnie Sorbelini, he said he would be here soon to continue the much-needed work, just in time, too. We now have a broken window to add to it, and the ceiling in the bathroom is starting to show damage. I think we still have a roof leak, of course, hot water is the first on the list to end gutters. We continue to share history on Facebook and Instagram, which I wouldn't be able to do without the help of our amazing town clerk, Joyce Graham. Thank you, Joyce. Thank you for your continued support, Kathleen Myers.
I told her to restart the computer.
Kevin, Rick?
Uh, yeah, Sam couldn't be here because it's her birthday, so happy birthday, Sam.
Happy birthday, Sam.
We haven't met in the last two months, mostly because of schedule conflicts, but we've been communicating via email to get a list of park improvement projects going for next spring. So all the different park managers have kind of submitted their own individual reports, and that's being compiled, so we can kind of release it when we start looking for grant money. So that's where we're at, starting to plan for next year, and what is gonna be improved, what's gonna be installed. We've got a couple of new pieces of park equipment that need to go in still, so that's it.
Great, thank you. Anyhow, one have any comment on resolutions coming up? That is a small typo, but it's still there. Two, 129.
That's it.
If you weren't paying attention, Joyce?
Yes.
The resolution numbers on the front on the agenda, it's 130 is the last one, but the actual resolution written says 129.
I'll fix it, we'll get to it, did I miss that? I didn't miss any, right?
No, no, no.
Oh, I see, I'll fix them, we'll get to it, thank you.
Just a numbering glitch.
Yeah, yeah, you have to re-added that one on, that's right. All right, got it, thank you.
So, moving forward, yes. I, I mentioned in my notes about doing a committee. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we form a revitalization committee. Did the invitation, and I wanna make a, I won't talk about the comprehensive plan committee. First, to make a motion to form a revitalization committee called PH2. It'll help both Phoenisha and Pine Hill.
Do you have a list of members?
We don't yet have a list, we wanna get more people coming in, and then we'll, we'll do a formal resolution next month.
We don't need a motion.
Yeah, I guess we don't. Okay.
Although I approve of the PH2 committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And, and we'll wait until we get people to do the, the committee for even the comprehensive plan. But please, people, if you're interested in the comprehensive plan revitalizing the committee, I mean, the community, each of those committees will need to be formed, and please, if you, if you're interested, send me your name and contact information, or Joyce. Okay. We'll move on to resolutions.
All right. Resolution 12622, resolution to pay all bills. Whereas the Department of Audit and Control require town boards to sign and inspect all vouchers coming into the town for payment to number in total amounts from each fund, therefore be resolved that the town board authorize the following vouchers paid. General, $277,866.44. Highway, $182,637.28. Phoenisha Water, $9,881.36. Pine Hill Water, $2,433.17. Phoenisha Lights, $102.96. Chichester Lights, $8.98. Pine Hill Lights, $68.18. Cemetery Fund, $2,500, for a total of $475,498.37, and move its adoption.
Second?
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Nysel?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Van Blarcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Disco Fine?
Yes.
Resolution number 127-22, resolution adopting the 2023 preliminary budget as 2023 town budget. Whereas the town of Shandaken has prepared a 2023 preliminary budget for review, therefore be it resolved, the town of, the town board of the town of Shandaken, following a public hearing held at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, hereby adopts the 2023 preliminary budget as amended as the 2023 town budget for the town of Shandaken, and move its adoption.
Second?
Second.
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Nysel?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Van Blarcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Disco Fine?
Yes. Resolution 12822, resolution to exceed STR cap for absent owners. Whereas the Shandaken Town Board passed a law, number 2, 2022, short-term rentals on June 10th, 2022, whereas the town law, number 2 of 2022, established a cap of 150 on the number of STR licenses available to non-resident owners. Whereas the town clerk, acting as the short-term rental licensing officer, processed and provided preliminary STR licenses to 150 non-resident owners, whereas the short-term rental licensing officer received four applications prior to the non-resident cap being reached, and in consideration that these four applicants were responsive to processing questions from the short-term rental licensing officer, and have no other outstanding violations, and in further consideration that this is the law's first year of implementation, therefore be it resolved, the town board authorizes the short-term rental licensing officer to process, and if all requirements are met, provide licenses to these four applicants in excess of the non-resident cap specified in town law number 2 of 2022. Be it further resolved, the town board will not accept additional requests for exemptions or exceptions for the non-resident cap. Be it further resolved, the town board directs the short-term rental licensing officer to establish a waitlist for any additional non-resident requests received, and to not process any applicants on said waitlist until such time as the number of non-resident STR licenses falls below the cap of 150, and then move its adoption.
Second?
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Nysel?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Van Blarcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Disco Fine?
Yes.
Resolution 129-22, Pine Hill Water, hire a part-time deputy commissioner. Whereas under section 20 of the town law, the town board shall designate all appointed officers and employees of the town. Therefore be it resolved that the following personnel, Shane, Barry Ann, be appointed as a town of Shandaken Pine Hill Water District Deputy Commissioner at $20 an hour, not to exceed 60 hours per year, and move its adoption.
Second?
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Nysel?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Van Blarcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Disco Fine?
Yes.
Resolution, oh, Kyle, sorry.
That's okay.
Go for it.
Resolution number 130-22, appointing short-term enforcement officers. Whereas pursuant to section 20 of the town law, the town board shall designate all appointed officers and employees of the town. Therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shandaken hereby appoints Donna Lemoine, how do you pronounce that?
Lemoine.
Lemoine, CEO Peter McGurk, BSI, and Grace Grant, CEO, as town of Shandaken short-term rental enforcement officers. S-T-R-E-O.
It's a cool band name.
It's almost like Stereo. I thought it was Stereo.
Be it further resolved, these positions are served at no additional compensation, and move its adoption.
Second?
Second.
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Nysel?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Van Blarcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Disco Fine?
Yes.
Open public comment, Jan.
Hi, I'm Jan Jaffe from Pine Hill. I'm gonna, my comments are on what Pete's mentioned about a collaboration between Phoenisha and Pine Hill about its downtowns, so I'm gonna assume that there's hundreds, if not thousands, of people on television right now watching this. And I wanna ask you, as well as all the esteemed participants here, whether you have been at the farmer's market in Phoenisha, or the farmer's market, that's the winter market, that's now in Pine Hill, or whether you were at Pine Halloween, or at the scarecrow contest in Phoenisha. I'm just talking about the last couple of weeks, were you at the Felix Slim concert at the Pine Hill Community Center at the same time in Pine Hill? There was a rock band at Wild in the West, or whatever he's calling his thing, and they were both jam-packed at the same time that Flying Cat had a performance. That's all in our little downtowns. And I think Shandaken is incredibly lucky to have two downtowns, that's really remarkable. We need to show them a little love. And so what happened as a result of some stirring up by some town council people, is that a group of community members from Phoenisha and Pine Hill have started meeting to talk about what we love about our downtowns and what could be better. We've met twice, you're all welcome to join, and the next meeting is December 6th, it's a potluck at 5:30 at the Pine Hill Community Center. We've also developed a survey that Joyce will have on the Shandaken Town posts that you can take to tell us what you love about the infrastructure, what you love about housing, what you love about health and human services, what you love about economic development in Phoenisha and Pine Hill, and what we could do better. And out of that, we hope that we'll come up with some plans, and then start looking for support to make them happen. So please join us, thanks.
Thank you, Jan.
Oh, and we have a logo, and it's called PH2.
Thanks, Jan.
What time did you say that was?
5:30.
5:30.
And initially, the state is offering to send us help. They're gonna send us some consultants to try and put these-
Well, I think initially, they're going to see Pine Hill and Phoenisha and realize that it's not just scenery, even though the scenery is pretty fabulous. And so they're curious, they've never been here, they've made no promises to us, but the fact that they're traveling all the way from Orange County and from Albany to just take a look around and then help think with us about what kind of consulting and grant-making assistance they might be able to give us.
Yeah.
So it's a promising start, but no promises.
Right.
Oh, I wanna say one other thing. The other thing that came out of the first two meetings that's just really exciting is that there were a lot of ideas that don't take a lot of money. They just take us cooperating. And so I think there'll be some things we can do just out of will, general will of making it so, and then some things that take a lot of money.
Thank you, Jan. Yeah, I, I think some of the people are from Empire Development.
Empire State Development.
Empire State Development, yeah. Any other comments tonight?
She didn't mention the Phoenisha Turkey Trot amongst all the activities.
Good comment.
I was talking about the last two weeks, the next two weeks are just awesome.
We're looking forward.
Well, if there's nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Kathleen Riley, Nadine Felter, Roy Tyson, and Marilyn Stewart. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.
Forgiveness over permission. Yeah.